Good morning. I'd like to welcome everybody to the March 3rd Weber County Commission Meeting. It's 10:00 a.m. We're going to start this meeting and follow the agenda. I'm Commissioner Gage-Fror. Again, welcome. I have to my left Commissioner Scott Jenkins. Typically, Commissioner James Harvey would be to my right, but he is in DC taking care of some federal legislation and some NACO business for us. So we'll excuse him for the day. We'll start off with an invocation by Shelley from our office, Pledge of Allegiance Stacy, and Thought of the Day Commissioner Jenkins. Shelley, do you want to come forward?
Our dear Heavenly Father, we're so thankful for the opportunity we have to meet here in this Weber County Commission Meeting. We're thankful for the opportunity to have our meetings in this amazing building, in this amazing county, and we're grateful for our leaders. Please bless our leaders that they will be thoughtful in their decisions, that they make decisions that are best for the community. Bless everyone in their travels, and I say this in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you.
Stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Commissioner Jenkins.
Thank you, Chair Fror. First of all, I want to thank Shelley. It makes me feel really good when somebody stands and prays for us and thank you. It just starts my day with nice, warm sensation. I'm appreciative of that. Secondly, my Thought of the Day, so many times we don't understand what a wonderful place we live in. So a couple of days ago, I was up at the Snow Basin Ski Resort, and I was on a gondola with some folks. And you know, it's fun to talk to these folks when they're out of town. And there was this couple sitting there, and I asked them, I says, "Where are you folks from?" And they said, "Oh, we're from Pennsylvania." And I said, "Well, why do you come to Ogden skiing? Why don't you go to the Cottonwoods or, you know, out to Snowbird, the big resorts or up Park City?" And he says, "You know, we've done that before." The guy said to me, the gentleman said, "We've been coming up here for 12 years now." And he says, "Compared to these other ski resorts," he says, "This is like a hidden gem up here." He says, "The Ogden area is such a special place, Weber County." And he says, "We split our time between Snow Basin and Powder Mountain." And he says, "They're both wonderful resorts, and the crowds aren't terribly large." And he says, "We just love this area." And I said, "Well, where do you stay when you come?" He says, "We got a house that we rent in the Upper Valley." And he says, "There's a group of five couples that come out here, and he says, 'We just absolutely love it.'" Well, you know, when you get thinking about that, when I was a lot younger, I had an aunt, my wife had an aunt that had a place in Lake Tahoe. And over there is, I'm trying to think of that ski resort in Lake Tahoe. Mammoth Mountain?
Mammoth, close to it.
Anyway, we thought, one President's Day, we thought, "You know, let's go over there and visit that place. That'd be a fun place to go." And we got talking to people that had been there, and that guy says to me, he says, "I can't understand why you would leave the best place on the earth to ski and go ski someplace like that." He says, "There is no place better than Weber County for skiing." And I had to agree with that, and we canceled our trip and stayed here because of that very thing. And I have to agree. We live in such a special place that sometimes I think we overlook it. We don't realize what a wonderful county that we live in and what a wonderful place. So anyway, that's my Thought of the Day. I just want to call attention to the fact that we live in a wonderful place and we shouldn't overlook it.
All right, Commissioner. Great thought. That's interesting you brought that up. I were just up in Canada last week, and the majority of the people are from the East Coast, Boston, New York area, Philadelphia. They come out to this back lodge I go to, abuse themselves for a few days. But it's amazing, they talk about skiing. These are people that ski all over the country. And a good share of them talked about Snow Basin and how that was their favorite resort now in Utah. And I said, "Well, don't spread the word. Keep that to yourself."
We were, this guy, what got us talking is we were on the lift going up, and we'd been on there just for a couple of minutes. And he turned to his wife and he says, "We just passed Big Mountain." And I says, "What's that? The elevation of the mountain where you ski?" And he says, "Yep, that's it, right there." He said, "We just passed it." Of course, we hadn't hardly even started up the hill.
Yeah, that's exactly right. I know where Big Mountain is. Okay, thank you, Commissioner. Let's just make one, make a couple of changes. We're going to make a change to the agenda. We're going to move public comments to, just before consent items, which typically they are, typically public comments, we moved it to the back of the agenda last week to accommodate public hearing. But with your permission, Commissioner Jenkins, I'm going to move public comment right now. So if anybody would like to come up and address the commission, please limit it to three minutes. We'd welcome the public comments.
Hi, David Rossen. I live in the Ogden Valley.
Good morning.
Morning. And I was here last week and caught a bit off guard, and so I'd like to be here as a business owner, recycled earth, feel more focused, not so frustrated. Quickly, people understand the importance of recycling. People care about recycling. The county should not stand in the way of city options or individual options. Haulers would and could have bid the price of recycling and provided that option, and the county standard in that way of that option. Just quickly, in comparison, I'm right now up in the Upper Valley. We spend $17 for our recycling can. We're looking at $17.46 on the current solid waste. That will be the new program. If you compare to any of these other programs, and John and Sean were a little bit confused about it, but there's, most of the residents of our county have the option. Now, whether or not the option is working well right now, it's because it was done in a different time. Now we're in current time. We could have bid it currently. But compared to some of the other unincorporated areas or areas outside of the main cities, and you're looking at $12.50 for a can versus the $17.46. If you take that by what they're charging, the haulers, for a recycling can currently and paying for the recycling program, it's 40%. That's a $5 can. So we should be spending $6.98 for our recycling can in Ogden Valley, and right now we're spending 17. We should, and I would request, that we hold off on awarding the contract until we allow the haulers, because they would and could provide an option for that can. It's everywhere else, but why can't we do it right now with this program? Thank you.
Thank you for those comments. Dave, come on back a second. I'm assuming you have had this discussion with Sean and John Watson?
So I was frustrated last week because I realized individually we want to recycle. We're confused by the current market of recycling. So when I was talking to Sean and John about it, it was more of, "Why didn't you?" It wasn't, "Why can't we?" Right? So I was blaming, "Why didn't we do this as part of the bid process? Why don't we support recycling in our community? Our businesses want it, our residents want it." And the residents don't want it if it's this unknown ambiguous huge number that we make it up to be. And I want to bring one more point. The solid waste program includes the recycling material. So if you give me one can, it includes that material. You remove that from that can, that can should be a little bit incrementally less expensive. And that's how the haulers do it from the get-go. We did this backwards. We said, "Don't worry about it, and we're going to all put it in that can." If we would have done it from the get-go, and I think we still can, because the haulers want to. Their businesses want to pick up another can and provide a program that encourages recycling. So I think we still could just hold it a minute and let them just come up with a number. They can do it. They do it thousands, millions of times, producing a number for that additional can. Most of our programs, and John and Sean were confused by that, most of our areas have the option with these haulers to provide that second can, that's a recycling can, and it's 40% on average of the original can. The county still gets their part. It still provides for the program. It reduces the amount that goes to the transfer station, yes, which is maybe against what John wants. But the reality is, as a community, we want to recycle.
Yeah, and I would agree with that. We heard that fairly strongly last week, that people do want recycling. Commissioner Jenkins, did you look into this at all when you were? This is Commissioner Jenkins' portfolio.
Yes, we did look into it, and I'm not saying it won't happen later on. You know, right now, and you're aware of this, you're in the business, the market for recycle right now is weak. It's up and down, and it all depends, we've had tariffs on China, and that's affected what's happened, because they take so much of our recyclable. And so I'm not saying it won't happen. But when we started our can project in Plain City, we went with garbage first and added recycle later, and so it's nothing, there's nothing preventing us from adding it later, and I suspect that it'll probably will happen. You were here last week and heard the number of people from the Upper Valley say, "Gee, we'd really like to recycle." So I suspect that's something we will look at in the future.
Yeah. It's just, it's short-sighted that we didn't as part of this. It is solid waste. It is in that can if you don't provide that second can.
Yeah.
It is part of that original bid cost, because it's in that can. Only one can provide it. And my concern is, at this point, you have the haulers wanting the job.
Yeah. Well, the other thing that prevents us from this is, you know, right now, the Lower Valley out west here, we're not sure what's even going to happen there. And so we felt like we were in a little bit of a risky situation, because we don't know if there'll be one city or three cities, or what's going to end up happening here. So we're just kind of waiting to watch right now. So I anticipate that something will happen there, probably by the end of the year, depending on what happens with the city incorporations out there. So that's kind of why we're watching.
Okay.
Okay. Thanks, sir.
Thank you, Dave.
The haulers could do it, though.
Yeah.
I'll bet they could do it in 10 minutes. I guess we'll do it.
They all admit it, that they do it now, like you say.
Yeah.
It's just a matter of doing it.
I think we're firmly committed. We believe that recycling needs to happen. We just need to go through the process to make sure that it's economically feasible for the county and everybody else. So Dave, you know, we want to make sure that we work with you here and keep a recycling program valid in Weber County.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, let's move to the consent items. We do need to move one of those consent items to the action items. Commissioner Jenkins, if you wouldn't?
I would. I'd make a motion that we take E6 off the consent agenda and place it to, oh, let's go to F, in front of F1, so we address it first.
That'd be good. Okay. Is that your motion?
Yes.
I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. So the consent item will stand as posted, other than E6 will be moved to, will now stand in front of F1. So with that, consent items, let me go through these. Number one would be request for approval of warrants 2474 through 2494 and 447785 through 447935 in the amount of $1,371,195.76. Two, requests for approval of purchase orders in the amount of $241,314.87. Three, requests from the Weber County Fleet Department for approval to surplus a 2011 Ford F-150 truck. Four, requests from the Weber County Sheriff's Office for approval to surplus three 2003 Harley-Davidson Road Kings. Five, requests for approval of the updated bylaws for Weber County Recreation Arts, Museums, and Parks. And seven, request for approval of retirement agreement between Weber County and the following people, Keith Drainey, Tracy Taylor, Derry Williams. Commissioner Jenkins, any comments before we go to Ricky for explanation?
The only comments I had, first of all, this is your chance to get a Harley.
It is.
Although you got one.
I've already got one, so I don't need two.
Yeah, you can get Gloria one. You look like a couple policemen going down the road. Secondly, there were a couple extremely large bills this time, one in our purchase orders and one in our warrants, and I assume Ricky will cover those. I called him, we went over them. That was it, so no.
That's it? Okay, Ricky, you've got, give us a little explanation on these.
Absolutely. One of the large purchases that Commissioner Jenkins was talking about is for, on our purchase order list, we, our POs were for $241,075% of that amount, or $182,000 is for the roads, and that is an open order for chip and tack oil. So that's getting prepared for the road construction that's going to happen once they're able to get out there and do that. So that's an open order. We haven't bought anything. It's a commitment. It's an indication to the vendor, agreement with the vendor, that we will buy up to that amount. And if we end up not using as much as we anticipated, that the amount that we pay will be less than the purchase order that we issued. 10% or $25,000 of the total PO amount was for the library, and that was primarily for audiovisual materials as well as some cabinet work. And then 6% or $15,000 is for the Parks and Rec Office, and that will go towards purchasing metal walls and a roof for the shop to replace that. As far as checks, we issued 172 checks this week for $1.4 million. 62% of that amount, or $846,000, is for the 12th Street Project, the West 12th Street Project, and those come out of the funds from the transportation tax and were approved by the Weber Area Council of Government. 15% or $199,000 is for the jail. This is another large payment, and that went almost, that went primarily to replace a boiler and to replace carpet out there, but it was also about $30,000 for medical and food and utilities.
Great. Is that it, Ricky?
That's it, thanks.
Mr. Jenkins, questions?
Well, the large, 810,000 for that road project, like Ricky says, those are dollars that come from Wake Hogg, and that project was set up a long time before we came up, and so we're just continuing on down the road.
Exactly.
And may I just wish everyone a happy Super Tuesday.
That's it?
Yes.
Go out and, Ricky, take a second and explain to the public what you're doing down at the Union Station, because that's fairly unique.
Yes, we, Weber County Elections, in the, over the past, we've been doing by mail. On average, we have between 10 and 3% of all voters actually vote in person. 90 to 97% of all voters have been voting by mail. And yet we still would have six polling locations, and those are expensive to run and take, you know, take logistical time. And so we decided to do a pilot project this year, and we're doing it with the presidential primary. We have expanded our early voting to include an evening hours, and we have consolidated down to one vote center this year, and it's at the Union Station. We currently have 35 poll workers there, ready to serve the public. I went there this morning. There were about 10 people in line around 7:00 a.m., and they flew through the system. The average time spent in there was, I don't know, two minutes, two to five minutes, to get checked in, get the ballot, mark it, and scan it. It's going quite well. There's lots of parking at Union Station, not just that one little lot in front, but we have an overflow lot that has almost 200 spots, and then we have another overflow lot to the south of it, which will have another 200 spots. So we're ready for a crowd if it comes this evening, and we did this as savings to the taxpayers and simplification of the logistical preparation required for the election. And it's a pilot. We'll see how it works.
Yeah, I like the idea. Number one location, it's a great central location. Most people know where it is. Good parking, and should result in some cost savings to the county.
Yeah. Public transit, it's right.
Right there on public.
Yeah, it's good.
Well, I'll be interested to see what the results are. That's a great concept. Okay, Commissioner Jenkins, I'm ready for a motion on consent items.
You bet. Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion that we approve consent items E1 through 7 minus number 6, because it's been moved down below.
Thank you for that motion. I'll second it. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Consent items as motioned are approved. Let's go now to, as requested, the consent item, request for approval of final reading of an ordinance of the county commissioners of Weber County amending certain fees to the Weber County Fee Ordinance will show as action item FE6. So, Cortland, you didn't address that?
Are you there? Commissioner Harvey?
I'm here. I'm here.
Do we have Commissioner Harvey on the phone?
Yes.
Commissioner Harvey, is that you?
Where am I?
No, we know where you are, but we just wanted to make sure that we do have the real Commissioner Harvey on the line.
Yes, I'm here. Thank you for, sorry for being late.
Great. How's things going in DC?
Things are great. President Trump gave a wonderful address and was very well received, spoke especially towards helping counties. Of course, the audience was that, but he was very, very good as it related to mental health and funding that with our county jails. That was the highlight, probably got the most, and he was actually touched. He didn't realize it would be so well received, and so I made, he said himself, that made a powerful statement with him. So hopefully, we'll be able to get some federal funding to help with mental illness and with jails, and that's wonderful news for us.
Great. Thank you. So are you going to be with us for the rest of the meeting, Commissioner?
I will be, yes.
Great, thank you. Okay, that was my first question. So I don't know if you heard what we've done, though. We just moved one of the consent items, request for approval of the final reading of an ordinance of the county commissioner of Weber County amending certain fees to Weber County Fee Ordinance. We're going to take that as the first action item. And Cortland, I believe you were going to speak to that?
Yes, thank you, Commissioners. The policy that is in place for the adoption of ordinances does say that the second reading of a proposed ordinance shall appear as an action item on the commission agenda, which is why we recommended that this be moved to an action item. This is not an ordinance that I've really been involved with, but it is an amendment to fees related to the Parks and Recreation Department. And what I've been told is there have been no changes since the first reading, and therefore, since it was approved as, at first reading, it is being presented to you by the Culture Parks and Recreation Department to be approved.
Correct. Okay. Questions, Commissioners?
No questions.
Commissioner Harvey, do you have any questions?
No, no questions. Thank you.
Okay, I'm ready for a motion.
I'd make a motion that we approve item E6.
Okay, we have a motion.
Been moved to the action.
We have a motion for action item E6. Was that a second by Commissioner Harvey?
Second.
Thank you. I'm going to call for the motion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, excuse me.
Commissioner Harvey?
Aye.
Commissioner Jenkins?
Aye.
Chair Fror?
Aye. Thank you. Let's move now to action item F1, request from Weber County Ramp for approval of the 2020 funding recommendations, which we have the sheet in front of you. And Ms. Halas is going to present that. Shelley, welcome.
Thank you. I presented to Wake Hogg last night. They seemed pretty happy about the recommendations. I felt like I missed a little bit, so I'm going to read this today. I know that I say often, but this board reminds me every year how much Ramp really is my favorite, the very favorite part of my job. It's very exciting to drive past a park and see the Ramp sign, or to open a program at a performance and see the logo in there. It's a result of a tremendous amount of work from community members who put in some amazing applications and then complete projects that make Ramp look so great.
Shelley? Tim is here, Van Denak. Could you mention, since the inception, how many millions of dollars have been put in Ramp projects?
Maurice is going to talk in just a second, and she has that information ready. It starts with the commission office putting the boxes together, and I appreciate the help that I get from Christie and especially Stacy so much. I really couldn't do this without her. And also with our legal review and the legal help throughout the entire process, so Chris Crockett has been an amazing help. I appreciate so much the work that these awesome unpaid volunteers give. Their time spent genuinely affects all Weber County citizens. They spend countless hours making sure that the Ramp dollars are spent wisely. They take their responsibility in making sure tax dollars go as far as they can very seriously. Each member reads every single application for the committees they are assigned to, whether it be Recreation and Parks, Arts and Museums, or the majors. Then they go out and meet with the applicants they are assigned to. They want to make sure there is no question that the project is worthy of tax dollars. When the board meets to go over the applications, they know they are in for a long day. For example, last Monday, the Arts and Museums Committee met from 9:00 a.m. until 5:15 p.m. Such dedication. I request that the Ramp Board members that are here today stand. We have Steve Crane, who is the Chair of our Arts and Museums Committee, Brent Parkin on the Arts and Museums Committee, Carla Woodward from the Recreation and Parks Committee and Advisory Board, and Lacey Richards from the Arts and Museums Committee. And then I'll turn the time over to our Chair, Marisha Baskeeter.
Thanks, Shelley. Welcome, Marisha.
Thank you. Glad to be here. So Commissioner Jenkins, you just get the same rundown that you got yesterday, but I also have to express a, our appreciation to Shelley for how much work she puts into Ramp. It really is a massive undertaking, and we are throwing constant questions at her, and she's great to pull out applications and find answers to any question that we have, which is fabulous. But you guys know I'm involved in a ton of things in our community, and I really do love Ramp. It has been my very favorite board that I've been involved in. It is such a joy to see the broad diversity of amazing projects that this has been able to fund over the years that we've had Ramp. There is not a single person, I think, in the county that hasn't been affected by going to a performance or a park or some type of recreational or arts, something that has been funded by Ramp. And it's really amazing to see firsthand the difference that it makes. So just a really quick little overview, Ramp was originally started, funded in, or approved in 2004, and then it was re-approved in 2014. It's 1/10 of 1%, or basically one penny per every $10 that's spent that goes into Ramp for us to fund amazing projects. And since the inception, it has given $42,811,210 back to our community to fund these amazing projects that we do. So just a little bit of a rundown on it. This year, we actually had an increase in funding, which was great to see. So normally, it's somewhere in the vicinity of about $3 million a year. This year, we had 4.2 million, just a little bit over that. The way that it works is one-third gets allocated to the major projects, and then two-thirds is allocated towards Recreation, Arts, Museums, and Parks. And then the municipal grants and the free summer Saturdays are taken out of that first, and then the remaining amount is divided between the two different pockets. So this year, there were definitely a lot of requests. Majors, we had $6.2 million in requests, and we only had 1.4 million in funding. So it was definitely difficult to try to figure out which one of all of those amazing projects we wanted to fund this year. We were able to fund four of them. I know you guys have the list in front of you, so we'll let you just kind of browse over those long lists yourself. In Arts and Museums, there was just over 2 million in requests, and there, well, there were 2 million in requests, and then we had just over 1.2 million in funding. So again, some of those had to be culled down. And then Recreation and Parks was a little bit closer. We had 1.3, just over 1.3 million in requests and 1.2 in funding. So Ramp, the board members really do put a lot of time and effort into this. They read their applications, and like I said last night, I encourage them to read them twice, because it's hard to compare the projects to all of the other ones, to rank them if you haven't read all of them first. So it's a tremendous amount of time and effort. So it's a tremendous amount of time and effort that they put into this. A lot of thought, a lot of discussion, a lot of going out and meeting with people and answering questions, and so I'm very thankful to all the hard work the board puts in. But we would like to submit this list of funding for Ramp to the commission for your approval this year.
Thank you, Marissa. And so we're spending, or asking for allocation of 4.2 million in total. Is that correct? Great. And you mentioned that 1/10th of a percent. What tax does that come out of?
It's just a sales tax.
Sales tax, right? What I want to make sure everybody's aware of is that's a sales tax, doesn't come out of property tax or any other, and which is important because a lot of, then the people that visit us, out-of-state people, get to contribute to our arts and recreation, et cetera. So we give them the opportunity to invest in our area since they're enjoying it. So, Commissioners, Mr. Jenkins, questions?
I don't really have questions. I would like to comment. These folks do a wonderful, wonderful job in my little community of Plain City. We have a park out there that was funded with Ramp, and we have a remodel that's going on this year. I see you got an award. So it's a blessing to the small communities as well as the large communities. Everybody really benefits from this. And if you look at the large projects on there, I couldn't help but notice the Pioneer Day Foundation, that stadium out there. So, you know, 324,000, that stadium, that's a huge number.
Big.
Yeah. And so it just really helps. Without Ramp, they just couldn't do so many of these things.
Most definitely.
Thank you. Commissioner Harvey, comments, questions?
Yeah, I've been watching it a little bit live. Thanks, Bill, for getting that over to me. Marisha, for you and your team, Commissioners, the Ramp, this group spends a lot of time tirelessly. They do it volunteering. There's no money that's taken from the program to run it. It's all, the monies are going right back into these parks, Recreation, the museums, and the arts. The only time we ever have any issue is when there's miscommunication out there. I really, really commend the Ramp and its committee, our legal team for helping keep us on the straight and narrow. And this is a committee that is, that works really a lot independent from the commission. There's not, there's no, at all pressures at all. It's just, it's an independent committee that does very well and represents us very well. I'm really, really tickled with them, and I love the improvements that have been made back into our, into our county. So when you're ready, I'd be happy to make a motion.
I'm ready.
I'd make a motion that we approve the Ramp funding as presented by Ms. Boskiter.
And I would second that.
And we've got a second for Commissioner Jenkins?
Make that Mrs. Burt, excuse me, make that Mrs. Burt, my error there for years. No one, Marisha, sorry.
It's not yet, not till July.
Thank you. Is that your motion, Commissioner Harvey?
It is my motion that we approve it. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a second, Commissioner Jenkins. Let me just say, I also would echo the words. I saw the committee in action, the Ramp Committee, and the work they put through the week before and the hours they spent. And it looked, it looked to me, just kind of as an outside observer, that they were, their due diligence as they look at these projects was very professional and that I think the taxpayers in this county can be proud of the work that goes into looking at these projects on a project-by-project basis so that it's important. This is a good source of funding, but we want to make sure that those dollars are allocated to the right areas. And it appears to me that's taking place. And our staff, Shelley, Stacy, Christie, also heavily involved with that. I know the hours they spent putting the packets together before you folks had the opportunity to cast your votes was extensive. So, thank you very much. With that, I'm going to place a motion. All those in favor say aye.
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 Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Unanimous. Thank you. Thank you, Marissa. Okay, let's move on to action item F. 2, request for approval of the county commissioners of Weber County appointing a trustee to Little Mountain Service Area. Thanks, folks. Steve, Brent, thanks for coming. Appreciate your work. Go ahead, Stacy.
Good morning. I received a request to post for a vacancy for the Little Mountain Service Area Board. A member of their board has resigned, and his term was to expire December 31 of this year. So I received one application that you have before you, and she would expire, she would just finish out his term to the end of the year.
Okay, and she was the recommendation of Western Zirconium?
Yes, she was the recommendation from the board, and she is representing Western Z, who is an agent or owner of land within the district that receives services from the district.
Great. And Commissioner Jenkins, that's in your area out there, so.
That is. So I serve on that board, and it's just hard to get members to serve on it. You know, they're actually supposed to be part of the service if you get them, and that only leaves three entities. And so it's a little tough to do, but it's important that we replace this, and so I recommend this. And I'd be willing to make a motion if you're ready.
I'm ready. Go ahead.
I'd make a motion that we approve the resolution for the appointee for Little Mountain Service Area. Her name was?
That would be Teresa Hawkins, correct?
Right, Teresa Hawkins, to the board.
We've got a motion, Commissioner Harvey?
I'll second that. A motion for resolution.
We have a motion for the resolution. Any discussion of that? Commissioner Harvey, you okay?
I'm okay.
All right. Fatima?
Commissioner Harvey?
Aye.
Commissioner Jenkins?
Aye.
Chair four.
Aye, thank you.
Thank you.
Carries. Thanks, Stacy. Let's move now to F. 3. This would be request for approval of a municipal materials management agreement between Weber County and Republic Service for the unincorporated areas of Western Weber County and Uinta Highlands. Mr. Wilkinson is here to present. Sean, welcome.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. This is the contract between Republic Services and the county for waste collection in the unincorporated areas of Western Weber County and the Uinta Highlands, as you mentioned. Commissioners, let me just go through a few highlights of the contract, and then I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. Republic Services is the sole and exclusive provider of municipal solid waste collection for residential units utilizing 90-gallon containers in the unincorporated areas of Uinta Highlands and Western Weber County. Republic Services will begin collecting municipal solid waste in these areas on or after April 1 of this year. This agreement does not include commercial waste or recycling materials collection at this time. Republic Services will provide all of the equipment and labor necessary to perform this service. Service-related complaints will be made to Republic and will be given prompt and courteous attention. If Republic misses a container and is at fault, the container will be picked up within one business day after the complaint is received. All municipal solid waste collected by Republic Services in these areas will be taken to the county's transfer station. Republic Services will also perform billing services. Billing is conducted on a quarterly basis. The initial term of this agreement is for five years with automatic six-year extensions unless canceled by either party. And the cost breakdown is provided here. It will be $43.17 per quarter for the Uinta Highlands and $45 per quarter for Western Weber County. Are there any questions about this contract?
So, Sean, this was, we talked about this in pretty good detail last week, so I don't think we have to beat it up too much, but for the average citizen utilizing these services in Weber County, give us the average cost savings over what most people are paying today. If you compare their current waste manager or their current bill for waste disposal now to what it will be on April 1, what would you think the savings would be?
The savings, what we've estimated is approximately 50%.
Okay.
We've seen, and that's because some of the areas, especially up in the Ogden Valley, people are paying a lot for these waste collection services. And the contracts that we could potentially put in place today if they are approved will save significant money for county residents.
Great. And I, final question is, is that we did have some discussion last week about the public being able to call in with complaints or if they had concerns with service. Basically, the process that we would go through as a county, since we are now kind of involved with this, is that, has that process been set and is it, would that be clear to a member of the public if they had a, had an issue with their pickup service?
Yes, right now, they will be given information by their service provider, whether it's waste management or Republic, and there will be a customer service number located within that information. That is the number that should be called for complaints about service or a missed pickup, those kinds of questions. They can also call the county, and we're happy to get ahold of Republic or Waste Management on their behalf, but Republic is doing the billing for this contract. They will handle the complaints. And as I mentioned, if they are at fault, they will pick that up within one business day.
Great. So we would encourage people to call first to the provider.
Correct.
And they have a toll-free number, I'm assuming, or some number.
Yes.
And then if they're, if they don't receive the adequate response, obviously, we at the county would be willing to follow up on that and make sure the service was provided as they expected.
Yes. And Resta Mill from Republic Services is here today if you have questions of him.
Great. Thank you. Commissioners?
I have a question.
Commissioner Harvey?
I, I really appreciate the work that you've done, Sean, with your group alongside of Commissioner Jenkins. In the south end of unincorporated Weber County, this move will be, it'll save $200. Bills that I've seen up in that area, it'll save those, the average person more than $200 a year annually for waste collection for the exact same service that they've had. And so I think this is, some people have had some questions with regards to why we're getting involved. We're getting involved to help save households money, even though it's, they won't see a lot of difference, other than they'll have a different colored can out front to many of them. Some of them, it'll be the same can. So we appreciate being able to go in with a lot of different users and negotiate down a more fair price contract for waste collection, an essential service for us. So I respect very much what's been done, and I'd be happy to make a motion when you're ready, Mr. Chair.
I'm ready. Commissioner Harvey?
I'll make a motion that we accept these contracts for curbside waste collection as Mr. Wilkinson has presented.
And I'm going to second that, and I'm going to call for the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Mr. Chair, I'm recusing myself because of a conflict of interest I have there, and I've recused myself through this whole process, so just want that to be noted.
Thank you for that. Yeah, let the record show, Commissioner Jenkins has recused himself on this issue because of a relationship there, and I think that's the proper, proper motion or proper vote at this point in time. So with that, all those in favor then, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes ayes. Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, let's move now to request for approval of solid waste collection and disposal contract between Weber County and Waste Management for unincorporated Ogden Valley. So same, same scenario, just Ogden Valley.
Correct. Same scenario, just a little bit different name on the contract, depending on the provider. But yes, this is for Ogden Valley, and essentially, what I've described before is exactly the same for what will take place in the Ogden Valley with Waste Management. Customer service will also be handled by Waste Management, a call made directly to the service provider, and if it is their fault, they will pick up within one business day. And if there are multiple service errors within a certain period of time, there will be a credit on the customer's bill. So that is in the contract as well. Commissioners, the price per quarter up in the Ogden Valley is $52.38.
Per quarter.
Per quarter.
Right, okay. And one additional item that we didn't bring up besides this cost savings was what we called the safety factor, where we have a lot of neighborhoods. I know in the valley especially, we may have three or four trucks go through a particular neighborhood at any given week. This will ensure that the people know exactly what date in the entire neighborhood, what date they could look out for the large trucks in case they have kids out on their bikes or trucks or whatever, so.
Correct.
And, and I truly believe that you'll probably see a decrease in the number of large disposal trucks heading up and down the canyon. It remains to be seen, but I truly believe that if we take three or four providers that have no reason to go to the valley, at least on a decreasing basis, so.
Yes.
Questions, Commissioners?
I have none, and with that, I'm ready to make a motion when you're ready, Mr. Chair.
I'm ready.
I'll make a motion that we approve the contract that Mr. Wilkinson's presented at that waste management for curbside collection in the Ogden Valley.
And I'll second that.
And Commissioner Jenkins, second. Any discussions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Sean.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move now to F. 5, request for approval to sell property in the Weber Industrial Park, a portion of Lot 2 of the Weber Industrial Platte, Lot 8 amended subdivision. Holland Wilbanks. Holland, you want to come up and present that?
Thank you, and I have to give a big thank you to Sean and his team and our attorneys for helping us walk through this process of selling this piece of property. It has gone through the public notice, has been appraised, and all the documents have been reviewed and are ready for your approval. So this is just a final step in the process of us being able to sell this, close to two acres of property in the Weber Industrial Park.
Okay, and can you explain a little bit about what the past use has been?
There has been no past use. It is a piece of property owned by the county, and it's adjacent to our gun range, so there's limited access for public use. However, the, one of the property owners, right next to the piece of property, has an opportunity to expand their business. So for an economic development standpoint, this is a really good use of that land because there's limited access, limited ability to use that as anything else. The county does not need that as part of its recreational operations for the gun range. And so now we have an opportunity to sell it to a user that can expand and grow their business in the Weber Industrial Park.
Okay, so it was surplus property, it was declared surplus. It was found the county didn't really have a current use or a future use for this particular piece of property.
Yes, sir.
So better to put it back on the tax rolls.
Yes, sir.
And economic expansion. Okay, questions, Commissioners?
Comment I'd like to make, not really a question, but it's important that we support our businesses, and this was a piece of property we weren't using, and this business contacted us and said he was in need of additional land to grow, and he really didn't want to leave if we could accommodate that. And so just what you described happened. We looked at it and decided that it was not in our immediate future and declared a surplus. And I think this is a win for the county because we keep a good company here, we allow them to expand, and all we did was sell a piece of property that we weren't using. And it doesn't say that we can't use this money and go out and buy another piece if we need to. We have plenty of uses for it, and I'm just, it just pleases me that we could help one of our local companies grow.
Yeah, that's a good point.
I agree. Thank you for that comment.
And just to be clear, there was an appraisal done on the property. We are selling this at fair market value.
Yes, sir.
And Commissioner Harvey, any questions, comments?
No, I don't have any commission, I don't have any, Mr. Chair.
So just so I know, where are we exactly with the contract? Because this has been a fairly lengthy process.
Sure. We've had five different addendums, and Cortland has been a massive help in getting the legal part of this process done with their brokerage side and their legal side. So we've about wrapped that up. We have the real estate contract in place, so now that we get your approval, we can go to closing beyond this.
When will closing take place, Cortland?
I don't know if that's been set up yet, but the agent said it should be soon, and we had in the contract that it was supposed to happen by March 13.
Oh, so, okay, that was my, I guess my question. So we do, they do have till March 13?
Yes, so this week or next week.
Okay.
And this is just one final step in the process that we need to take from our side as a county.
Got it.
So, Mr. Chair, I'd like to know what we ended up selling this for. So, Mr. Chair, I'd like to know what we ended up selling this for. I think that'll be part of the record.
I think so.
$175,000 is what it appraised for. Isn't that correct?
That's right. And that's the approximate price we're selling it for?
Yes, sir.
Very good. All right, Mr.
And it did have, and again, if there's any questions, it did have limited access. I'm not sure, other than possibly us, a future use, there wasn't, there wasn't good access, as I recall, into this property.
Right. It was a closed piece of property. It's about 1.75 acres.
True.
And the access was through the north side of the gun range, which we use as part of our maintenance. And we worked in agreement to make sure that we still have access to all the needs, just to maintain our gun range there, and any utilities that need to take place to make sure that we function. So this was a very closed piece of property that really works great for this company.
Mr. Chair, I'd make the motion that we approve item F5, which is the sale of our property on the north side of our gun range.
Thank you for that.
Second?
Second by Commissioner Harvey. Any discussion, Commissioner Harvey?
None. I know this does not negatively affect the gun range. I appreciate the efforts that have been made to safeguard that. And so, this will be good for us to be smart stewards of the county's money.
Thank you for that. Have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Chair votes aye, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
You've got a contract.
Thanks.
Okay, we've done public comments. Commissioner comments? Commissioner Harvey?
Under my first hand.
Any words of wisdom for us today?
Thank you for your patience, both of you, for letting me call in here. Appreciate, I love technology, that it works so well, and we're able to participate, be a part of this. Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate you carrying the flag for us back there. You know, Commissioner Jenkins and I really would like to be there, but we're great that you stepped up to the plate. So, thank you very much. Mr. Jenkins?
Yeah, I felt bad that I had to, I'm speechless, that I had to stay here to kind of keep things afloat while Commissioner Harvey was gone, but somebody had to do it.
Well, as Commissioner Harvey said, we divide and conquer, so.
That's right.
That's what we're doing. Take care of DC, be careful back there.
Yeah, we're good. We'll do, we'll do well. Back tomorrow.
Oh, great.
Motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, we're adjourned. Thank you very much.